Okay, hello ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your patience. We're ready to move back into our regular public meeting, I need a motion?
Uh, move to, uh, end the executive session and reopen the regular public meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're back in the public session, maybe we should also move to accept the HIB?
I think we have one of those motions on the, uh, on the agenda here somewhere.
So we'll tie it together, okay, cool, so then we will move to agenda items then.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Operation Motion Number 40.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? We're good? Okay, roll call please.
Alright, Board Operations Resolution Number 40, Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
Dr. Gruber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Worrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Walzer?
Yes.
So carried.
Mr. President, I'd like to move School Operation and Curriculum motions 95 through 111 with Amendment to Number 95 to add accepting the Superintendent's HIB report from tonight's meeting as well.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion?
Could I speak to 98?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to speak to 98 and remind, um, the Board that the equivalency waiver application that we filed with the, um, State of New Jersey had to do with reducing the number, for next year, reducing the number of, uh, observations required for tenure staff from three to two, but at the same time increasing the number of minutes of one of those observations to 40 minutes. Our reason for applying for that waiver, which has been offered by the State to all the districts in New Jersey, is that administrators will be able to observe for a longer period of time during a lesson and collecting more evidence for each of the components in the domains, and then that will better position administrators to give good and valuable feedback to teachers.
Anyone else, any other, any other comments? Roll call please.
Alright, School Operations and Curriculum Resolutions 95 through 111 including the HIB. Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
Dr. Gruber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Worrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Walzer?
Yes.
So carried.
I did want to make a note, uh, boy, we're moving fast, I have to get with the program. On 103, School Op and Curriculum, and I apologize for missing that, I was, uh, wanted to give the explanation for the waiver application. I wanted to let the Board and the public know that, um, at the middle school, at the middle school level, our community education person, Claire Druton, has put together quite a wonderful opportunity for our students for after-school programs, for dance through Community Ed, and we're really hoping that our students will, you know, we don't have many clubs at the middle school, uh, we do have some, but our students will be able to take advantage of that dance program, and then in addition, um, I have taken from the allocation of funds for, uh, clubs and activities, and I'd like to be able to, and I'll make this more formal, but I'd like to be able to, um, add more to the drama stipend at the two middle schools so that, uh, right now we do activities for, uh, if we do activities for a drama at the middle school, there, um, wow, we do our Dr. Martin Luther King Show, our Black History Presentation after, after school in the evening, and I'd like to do that as well, but I really would like to see our middle schools have a dramatic or a musical presentation the way we used to, uh, the good old days when, when I was principal of BF, we put on a musical, I think we put on The Wiz one year, and I think that, um, we have so many talented kids, right now just the kids in grades seven and eight would have the opportunity to take drama, I really would like the op, to extend the opportunity to children and students in grades five through eight to be in a, uh, a musical or a dramatic presentation, so I did want to let you know, remind you that Mr. McHale and I have planned that.
Thank you Barbara, because we know that we always, um, we support the arts, but when financial constraints prohibit us from having it in school, at least it's nice to know that the kids will have an opportunity after school, and since we were going back, I just wanted to, um, go back to items number 110 and 111 that were added to our agenda, and, um, thank Tambah Ali for his donation of a thousand books, um, to the high school athletes, as well as, um, the half-day schedule which we're adopting, I just want to mention that because those are two items that were added.
Okay, you're on.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to move Finance and Budget motions 150 through 164.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Let's give it a more time, okay, roll call please.
Finance and Budget Resolutions 150 through 164, Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
Dr. Gruber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Worrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Walzer?
Yes.
So carried.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel motions 254 through 280.
Try now.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion?
I had a question on item number, um, 273. This is a new item that was added, it wasn't on our, um, our previous agenda, is this a new hire?
No, this is, um, we're bringing back with the retirement of one of our custodians as we spoke about, you know, what, what would happen if a day shift custodian retired, and we would bring back the next on the seniority list, that, we, so we had a retirement, so Mertland Shepherd has been, you know, our employee for a number of years, and we're bringing him back.
Any other comments? Roll call please.
Personnel actions 244 through 280, Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
Dr. Gruber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Worrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Walzer?
Yes.
So now, we come to the part, where the public gets to participate again, where you can speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Rules are the same, except we have less time, we can give 20 minutes of this, but you have three minutes, give us your name, address.
My name is David Crittenden, my address is 292 Ogden Avenue in Teaneck. Um, as far as the legal, uh, opportunities to raise funds, like what are some of the other alternative options for raising money for the school district?
We'll answer after we get all the questions out.
Oh, so like, okay, so that's the question number one, um, I guess for now that'll, that'll hold.
You sure, you got a few more minutes?
Well, you know what, if I think of something, I'll sit close to the mic.
Okay.
Good evening everyone, um, Eileen Hillman, I'm a teacher at Teaneck High School and a teacher in the district for the last 13 years. You had said that you wanted ways to help us reach out to the community, and what I can say is, I know in 2010 with the budget cuts we had, we lost our public relations liaison, we had somebody that worked for the district that made sure the community knew the positive and amazing things that happened here in Teaneck. That was due to the fact of a budget cut, however, that loss of a position has created a community of apathy where they don't know what's going on, and so we need to find a way to, we need to find someone who is going to get that information out, the website is not enough, I have plenty of students who have no internet at home, their parents don't know what's going on, we need newsletters going out to our families of all the positive things that are going on in Teaneck, because I know you all know the great things, as I've worked with each of you in some way over the years. So, the first thing, as a Board of Education, that you need to do to get the community behind you is reach out to that community, and you can't do that just sitting here and assuming they're going to come and read what's on a website, thank you.
So, do I have to repeat my information again, or is that?
Actually, it was Ms. Melnick's turn, but you can go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Melnick, you want to go?
She gave me the, okay, so like, I guess second, and I guess it's piggybacking on that last point, that, um, that as far as emailing the minutes, like this packet, is there any way that the Board could email that out to all parents that have, uh, children in the Teaneck Public Schools, or do you already do that? Oh, okay.
Hi there, Regina Melnick, I'm a teacher here at Teaneck High School, I just have a general question about something I see, uh, meeting after meeting, when you go into Executive Committee, you, uh, one of the last things you say is that when the time for confidentiality is over, that we'll hear the results of those meetings, but I never seem to get an update on those things, and, um, there's certainly a lot of talks about lawsuits that are coming, um, before the, uh, district, um, some things that have been in the Bergen record, and then, um, the story kind of goes away, and we never really hear about perhaps if the district had to, um, lay out a lot of money for a lawsuit. Um, at a recent budget meeting, Mr. Fronappel made the point that you really want to keep your cap because, um, if you only have one point, or your surplus, I should say, if you only have 1.2 million dollars in the bank, uh, one lawsuit could wipe that out, and so I was wondering, is that likely, does Teaneck have a history of having to pay out million-dollar lawsuits, and if there are lawsuits that you discuss in Executive Committee, when does the public hear about the results of those things, thank you.
The other thing, and, and I brought this up to like a member of the Board before, like, one of the panelists, that, you know, like, there's the Sunday with the Superintendent seems to be a very positive step to me, like, I just went to a recent meeting with Barbara Pensac, and I thought that was very positive, and one of the questions that I raised, I guess in that meeting was, why don't the principals of the elementary schools, the, uh, middle schools and the high schools have sessions where they get in front of the parents, and they get face-to-face contact with the parents, and some of the issues that may take months and months or years to come to the fore will likely be brought up a little bit sooner, and there's a little bit more of an interplay and ability to work with the parents, change things on the front end instead of in the fourth quarter with one minute left, which is what I hear from parents, because I'm talking to a lot of parents, so that's one thing that I think would be a positive, so your comments on that?
I apologize, um, Eileen Hillman again, um, I also was curious, I know each year we seem to be working on the budget for the next year, and I don't hear a lot of planning as to what our five-year plan is, and then how we're going to improve things again and get away from cutting from year to year, so what are we doing to start thinking ahead to those five years, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments, observations? Okay, so you're doing this 30 seconds at a time, right?
I am, so, the last thing I guess is, is, and this is, I guess, it could be a question where I'm catching up to something that's already been stated, but as far as the number one goal, like each person on the panel, um, what would you think is the number one goal, like if you had to state a goal for the Teaneck Public School System, what would you think, like what is your number one goal for the Teaneck Public School System? Like, I'd like to hear each person just state what their number one, like what do they see as the number one objective, the number one goal for the Teaneck Public School System, and that's accepting the mission statement that was read earlier. If there's one metric, I guess, if there's a certain goal, I'd just like to hear that, maybe two, to be generous, like if there are two points that you'd like to make, great, because one might be a little bit restrictive, but two, you know, one, two max, please, thanks.
Any other questions or comments, observations?
Hi, my name is Valerie Waka, I've lived in Teaneck for 32 years, I've been a para for 16 years, I have two children, they've gone through the school system, they've done very well, um, I just have a question, I understand that there, I think there might be seven paras, I think that's what they're called, they're going to be librarians or in school suspension, and I'd like to know how you pick them out, and who, you know, how they're going to be picked out, since you're getting rid of 39 of us and 32, um, lunchroom aides, so I'm just kind of curious of how that is going to be, you know, handled, besides, you know, we're already getting our jobs taken away, so I just wanted to know how that was done, so, just so.
Okay, we'll get to that, you have, you have another question?
No.
That's it?
Yeah, considering, you know.
Okay, we're going to answer all of them after we get all the questions together. Fair enough? Anyone else? Okay, answer away.
So, I'm sure people will let me know if I, if I don't meet, if I don't answer all of these questions, um, Mr. Crittenden, in terms of fundraising and grants and opportunities, um, I'm glad you asked that question, and there are many, many ways, I, I know you're coming to me, I think I know that you're coming to meet with me, and I'm going to beg your indulgence and let me have some, you know, documents and data ready for you, because I'm, now I'm very excited about sharing some of those opportunities with you, so if that's okay, I will, well, just generally, the issue is, I think with Teaneck, we're, we're rarely, first of all, the big grants, um, are very difficult to get, they quite often are not for Teaneck, so even though we have a free and reduced lunch number, and that's how many of the grants are, are based, um, as our free and reduced number has increased over the past few years, so has everyone else's, so we're still, we, we seem to miss that range where we would, um, possibly get approval for a lot of the big-money grants. We do get a lot of grants, and they tend to be smaller grants, our administrators, Mr. McHale's department, I write some grants, our teachers write some grants, and so we do, we do, uh, tend to, people tend to write well, and we do tend to get some of those grants, but, um, that's why, so in general, that's the answer to your que, we rarely let a grant opportunity for a grant that we're eligible go by without applying, you know, without applying for it. We don't have a big one right now, we did have, uh, a couple of years ago, we had three simultaneously, it was pretty heady time, uh, we were able to add the outreach people to the elementary schools with a grant, and then of course, as with most grants, if you like it and you want to keep it, you have to pay for it, so the Board did, um, support the elementary schools by maintaining that position, that was a three, three-year grant, so we had those outreach coordinators or those outreach people who were social workers for three years, and then the Board, um, and the public sustain that grant now, we also had a, um, we were lead agency for, uh, putting together information for the, for the county on services to, um, parents and children, and then we had a REMS grant, a Response to Emergency Management Grant, that allowed us to, uh, take a very good look at our schools, the safety in our schools, add some procedures and protocols, and get some training for all of us, that we managed to sustain, as an example. It was a grant to let us, uh, review our Response to Emergency Management, this came out after 9/11, and, and I'm sorry, and then let us, um, you know, improve our information, we had, we had someone come in and, and train us, and we were able to look at our documents and look at our procedures, and that wasn't a huge, it was about $100,000, but it was money that we, you know, that we spent, and, and we've been able to sustain, um, now, now of course, the county and the State are helping, they're helping us by doing site visits and making suggestions for us, as they do all the other school districts in the State, so it isn't anything that's just happening for a district that gets a grant. Oh, good, absolutely, thank you, we had two grants, our teacher evalu, a new teacher evaluation system, we received a grant to help launch that, and we launched the Teachcape Teacher Evaluation System, and then we had a second grant to help us sustain that for another year, actually, we had the second grant because we did such a good job with the first grant. As to the liaison for community, again, and I know it wasn't meant this way, but it seems like, you know, that, that we're criticized for eliminating something that could be helpful, but what that position was eliminated, so we could save teaching positions, and it was clear and simple, we had, we had so many, uh, teaching positions and administrative positions that had to be eliminated in that, that, uh, bad budget year, that we said, alright, we can't, this is about class size, it's about keeping our good programs, it's about keeping, um, what we have whole for the children, and that's why that position went, and we do, we do get a lot, our, our schools do a great job because they, of, of sharing the great things that they do, now the news agencies don't always want to take the, the great things, they, we get a lot of publicity, but they don't always publish all of those wonderful things, now, and I know, Ms. Hillman, you do the newspaper, I don't know if you're going to going forward, or I thought you did, or you didn't, or, there's a, there's a newspaper club at Teaneck High School, as, as the conversation went on, or the discussion, um, I thought, wouldn't our high school newspaper be a great way to promote, certainly the high school, and I know that's not just what you were suggesting, but what a great way to promote the high school with, with a really super newspaper, I know Mr. Heck found, um, he's always forging and finding these wonderful things in the, um, in the hidden places in Teaneck High School, and he found some old newspapers, and I want to tell you, those, that those newspapers were amazing, that the students did, and we'd like to see our students in the 2015 and 2016 creating that quality of newspaper, and people still read newspapers, so that's certainly one way, we try our hardest, we, we depend, and maybe wrongfully, but we depend on the good works that happen in our classrooms, and, uh, well-paid teachers and administrators to, to help us spread the word, so, um, it is something, actually, we just discussed it, uh, at, at other meetings, at community relation meetings and, and things like that, so maybe we need to take another look at how we can do that without spending money, because we're not going to take money away from the classroom if we can help it. The emailing the minutes, I'm not sure, we post the minutes on the website, and they are, uh, we are able, people are able to read them, we hope they read them and don't print them, because that's about paper, and I don't know, I'll look into whether that's possible, or even, I think some people wouldn't want the minutes, so I don't know that everybody would want us to email the minutes, but I will look into that, and maybe at our meeting or at the next Board meeting, I can give an answer to the, to you or to the public on that, so, um, but you know they are available on the website, should you choose to look. No, no, I, okay, it's, it's, yeah, I just wanted to give it, um, just in terms of protocol, that typically, you ask the question and then she responds, and so, other times there are opportunities for dialogue. Okay, what was this, this is number four, okay, I'm going to, um, talk about the open forum for the principals, such as Sunday with the Superintendent, and as I told you at the, I love that, I wish people would have more evening meetings, the principal, the schools do have BQMT, and that's made up of teachers and administrators, as well as parents, and they do have PTOs, PTA's, PTSOs, so that is a forum for the principals to hear and be heard, and I would suggest, if that is, needs to be modified for schools, that you, that you do that, again, it's a conversation, if you have some ideas, I'd love to share those ideas with our principals, um, I like, I think that one of, I think I said to you, the four o'clock meetings, some of our BQMTs are at four o'clock, and I know that's tough for our parents, that's to accommodate our teachers, because the schools want to have, the administrators want to have the voice of our teachers as well, um, just from experience, when I was at BF, we'd have a four o'clock, and then the next one would be a seven o'clock, so that that would, if, I make that suggestion, if that works, if that works in your particular school, what happens in executive session, eventually, where it can be shared, is always shared, it may not, it doesn't say, this, we discussed this in executive session, and now we can share this with the public, but it always comes out in where it can, uh, through agendas and so on and so forth, um, some things are confidential, if this is a matter of a student, or a confidential matter about a staff member, then it won't, it won't come out, we don't, when the reference was made to lawsuits, uh, the, you know, lawsuits happen, this is a litigious society, or decade, or three decades, so lawsuits happen, and, uh, not as people know, not only, not always because you're doing something wrong, but you're doing something that somebody has a problem with, so, um, that was the reference to a lawsuit, and sometimes it happens because we, we have disagreements with people about placements of students. of students. And, you know, where the district feels that we have better programs than our programs, and, and people disagree with that, and then, then sometimes we go to court. So that's really all I can say about that. There are two lists of paraprofessionals in the contract. One list talks about library pairs, and the other list talks about classroom pairs. So anything further or going forward will probably be worked out, or certainly in consultation with the association. That's really all I can say about that with any, with any knowledge. And when I speak, I try to be truthful, the truth as I, as I know it. I know there was another one. Time for what? I just?
Do we have lawsuits, the question, or does we have a five-year plan for?
Oh, the fi, oh, the five-year plan. I'm, I wish we could. We, we, we don't know from year to year what our funds are going to be, what state aid we're going to have, and what's going to happen in the district. We don't know what the cost of health insurance is going to be, other than we know it goes up. We don't know what the cost of prescription drug, our prescription plan is going to be. There's so much that we don't know. The only thing that we might know is what our salaries might be if we have a negotiated agreement, but it seems like almost every year we're sitting down and negotiating an agreement with someone. Now, 70% of our budget, or between 65 and 70% of our budget is personnel. We're a serv, and I'm proud of that. We're a service-oriented, I don't even want to say business entity, thank you, organization. So, you know, negotiated salaries, benefits that are increasing rapidly, other costs that increase rapidly. And so to make a five-year, a very strong five-year fiscal plan is, while we can project flat aid, because that's pretty much what it's been, we can project things. That's, that's what a five-year, that's what, the only thing that we can do with a five-year plan. And I wish we really could do more. We try to plan, we certainly plan our textbook adoption, we certainly plan to move in areas like social studies to online curriculum so that we're not, and we can use those original resources, some of the great resources that are out there that are free. We can't do that in, right now, in curriculum like science, so we have to plan textbooks. And frankly, even planning five years for textbooks, when, with the new Common Core, for example, and the rapid, the ramping up of the changes in the curriculum, we just had to turn around and, and change our whole, not our whole curriculum, but purchase other curriculum materials for science for next year, and, and it's mandated, not the particular curriculum document, or the textbooks, but that we do it. So we do have five-year planning. The board plans every year at the summer retreat, and we have some idea for, for next year. Did I misspeak, did I say, summer retreat? Okay. My summer retreat.
Local, locally?
Local retreat.
It's not a retreat.
Eugene Field Retreat. So five years, and, and I, and it's a good question to ask, and I, and I know that it sounds like a question to hold people accountable, but I wish somebody could tell me what we're going to have as, as finances next year. But we just work through it, trying to maintain the very best level that we possibly can. So I think I addressed almost everything, if not, I'm sure people will remind me, and I don't know if you have anything you want to say.
Well, I just want to say that we've actually, that five-year budget plan, we've actually tried it, and I think our superintendent spoke quite eloquently about that, that there's so many unknowns, and I mean significant, and we talk about millions of dollars unknown in terms of what that could be. And I think 2010, if we taught us anything, is that there's no sure thing, you know, where a budget was cut by $6.1 million because the governor felt that's what he wanted to do. And he could do it again. There's nothing stopping him from doing that. And so it becomes very difficult to project like that. All we know is that the costs go up. That, that's the one thing that's certain. I think Ms. Critten wanted to know what was the one for each of the board members, their primary goal. I, I mean, if we could be really succinct about, because there's nine of us and it's late, I can tell you the primary thing, I think, would be to raise student achievement, in a nutshell. And to have that manifested, not only in the classroom tests and all the sorts of assessment tools, but also on standardized tests. And the reason on standardized tests is because, however we might feel about it, how inappropriate it is, or how it's not useful as a summative, I'm sorry, as a formative evaluation, that's what people gauge you on. If we were to do that, and we were able to make that one thing sort of happen, we wouldn't need to do anything about the press because of the demographics of our group. If we could do that, that would actually deal with a lot of issues in terms of folks feeling, what they're feeling about our schools. Is, is, people, okay, but if we could be succinct?
I can, I can be very succinct. Three, three bullets. The first was what Artie mentioned, increasing student achievement in general, and in particular decreasing the achievement gap. The other two are a bit of pie in the sky, but I would love to see universal pre-K, and I think we have to work toward changing how education is funded.
Essentially, it's just raise preparedness for the 21st century, including academics, technology, and/or vocational training, as appropriate.
Four words to initiate it, which is post-secondary life readiness. I'd like to see our students able to face whatever challenges they have to, whether it be collegiate, proprietary school, any type of post-secondary education, whether it be work situations, whether it be communicative skills, they're ready. They've got the education, the background, the communication skills to do what they want to do next. Post-secondary life readiness.
To me, it's about opportunities. I believe that public education is a vehicle where every student should be able to get opportunities to grow, and to be able to achieve, not only educationally, but also as a person, be able to achieve their goals. I mean, we see it here, with our students, you know, how eager they are to participate, and how, how, you know, the type of product that they're able to present to us in certain occasions, and I hope that continues more regularly. So to me, it's about opportunities to the students. Believe from those who educate that our students can achieve the highest level of learning as possible, and, and being able to remove whatever issues we bring to the table sometimes, you know, trying to, to, to identify students. I think, you know, everyone is capable of learning, and it's just a matter of how hard everyone is, is willing to support people to, to learn.
I think we, we pretty much all agree that the, the central mission has to be about student achievement, however you define that, you know, whether you call it preparedness or, it's got, it's the students, that's what we're here for. That being said, a central concern that I have is, and we saw how it played here tonight, we've got factions in the town, and we're all kind of pointing fingers and screaming at each other, well, it's your fault, you know, we don't have the money for the program that we need for these students to achieve, or it's your fault that, you know, this has gone wrong, or that has gone wrong. And I, I think that part and parcel of making that student achievement happen is, we've got to try to figure out a way to get all these factions in town to talk to each other and work together for the sake of the students.
Well, I agree also that it's definitely about increasing student achievement while providing superb education, and I think we just have to maintain our ability, ability to be fiscally responsible and think about the taxpayers in the town as well.
My two items are, one, reducing the opportunity gap, and continuing to provide opportunities and exposure to, to our students, and also to, I'm just so tired. And also to know, to, to make sure our students understand unequivocally that we support them and believe in them.
So it's 11:30 at night, and you would ask that type of question? And I'm like, I said to Artie, we have a retreat, we state our goals, and we, we, you know, kind of establish what, what is our mission, and that's why we do have our, our goals, which are four goals, which are listed on our agenda, and we make sure that we reiterate those so that we are always mindful, regardless of who is before us, that our, our mission is always about the students. And, you know, again, with student achievement being the number one issue, and unfortunately, oftentimes, we're here, we're not always discussing academic issues, because we're always talking about the funding of those academic issues. So whereas, for me, technology, preparing our kids for the 21st century, STEM, all those things are really important, it's kind of, is, takes a backseat to how do we fund it? So now it's about looking at enterprise funds, trying to find ways that we can actually fund this 21st century education with 20th century tools, in terms of using the taxpayer and using the property taxes as the funding mechanism. It just doesn't work, and not for the need of global preparation that we need to do for our children. There's a lot that's wrong with current public education, but that's about it.
So I want to thank you for asking that question. I actually want to thank everyone for their questions and for their comments and observations. I did want to, I was sitting here sort of thinking as Javon was speaking, I think someone said earlier that, you know, we do this five-year plan so we can figure out ways not to cut. But the reality of it is that we have a 2% cap here, and that's, that's really real. I mean, it is unlike in councils where they have caveats, we have no caveats. And so we're looking down the road, and I think Javon had mentioned it earlier, that we're already talking about for the 2016, 2017 budget, a one point, was it, one point?
1.8.
1.8, almost $2 million, you know, in our, in our dollars now, going forward. And that's a reality, that as a board, we cannot avoid it, because we're compelled by state law to have a balanced budget, and it's real. I mean, it's, 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 I can't make it any plainer than that. That's not hyperbole, that's not, you know, that's not fiction, and it's, and we're feeling that. But having said that, on a, on a more positive note, because we're coming to the part of our meeting where we get to hear committee reports, I do want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and to congratulate Clara Williams and Sebastian Rodriguez, where Sebastian was certified, became a certified board member. I don't know if that's certifiable or certified. And Clara Williams is a master board member, and that's due to all the training that they go through. We're required to do that, and they went far and beyond the call of duty, and I just want to congratulate them on that. And so we'll open up for brief and crisp committee reports.
Well, first, I want to thank all of the board members that came out to support Sebastian and myself. And again, I do what I, what I do because I really believe in, in the TNEC School District, and I believe in the students. I attended, at that, at that particular meeting, we discussed board member ethics update, which there were 36 public advisory opinions that were recently issued, and we discussed as a group in quite some detail the impact it will have on the school board members and ethics issues, and we know that there'll be a number of challenges going forward. I also attended a legislative meeting in Princeton on May 2nd. And there we discussed, one of the main topics of discussions was the funding of the, well, the shifting, the suggested, suggestion that they shift the pension, teachers' pensions to the school districts. And basically, the school boards is taking a position that that's unacceptable, and that we will do everything we can to see that that doesn't happen. We also talked about, we also discussed teacher certification and the changes that the, that the State Board of Education is instituting. And there's a number of, quite a number of changes, and I think that we concluded that it's making entering the teaching profession a little more difficult, and we don't quite understand what's the driving force behind it. I'm told that, you know, it's just raising the, making, raising the criteria, making it a little more stringent, but, you know, that's, that's to be seen also. And that's basically the main area. There's a number of legislative bills that are going before the Assembly and the Senate, and that, and they have a lot to do with the testing student, having to sit and stare or not sit and stare, and how our students are, are treated, and we'll, we'll see how they move forward as well.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Noncommittee reports?
No, we're not doing that tonight. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just want to make a statement regarding our PTOs and PTA's. I went to a meeting as liaison this past month, and I saw several people at work managing what is almost like a small business. They have responsibilities for getting revenue, donations, people participate in that. They have responsibilities for accounting, for what they do financially, use of the money, getting discounts for the products that they are producing, meaning trips for their classes, trips for the students, activities, picnics, end of year, hot dog fest at Lowell, for example. The numbers don't have a whole lot of zeros, but that doesn't make it any less intricate than what we do here. There's not enough of them doing it. I hope that more people volunteer to do it, and these are the very same people who, with more knowledge and more activity and more participation, eventually become probably the board members that you see sitting here. So just a shout out to them, what a job they do. Thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback off Howard's statement, comment. Although his school doesn't have a lot of zeros, I would say the PTO at the high school, we have a few more zeros, because here at the high school, we do fundraise for Project Graduation. And this year, our fundraisers have been very successful, and I believe we are charging one of the lowest prices in a long time, $30 per student, to attend Project Graduation. So it was a lot of work, you know, but it's well worth it, because our students are well worth it, and the students will have a fabulous time the night after, well, the night of graduation.
Any other happy news? Do your thing.
Move to a chair. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We see you at the next show. Good night, all. Thank you for coming.